... School Committee of Thursday, June 9th, 2016. The reason why I'm opening the meeting is I get to do that once a year and it's the reorganization night. So we currently don't have a chairman and we will do that in just a moment, but I'd like to take one moment first and recognize someone who has been very near and dear to all of our hearts, who recently passed away, Joe Shaves. Joe was a member of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee for 15 years. He also served on the Kingston School Committee for 11 years. He was extremely dedicated to the students of our district. He spent countless hours reading through Mass General Laws. He took his commitment exceptionally seriously. He was truly a gentleman, a professional, and I have to say that he's a huge loss to the community of Kingston and all of our local communities. The school committee in Silver Lake and in Kingston are going to band together along with all the administrators and we're going to plant a memorial tree to Joe in the Integrated Preschool Playground. And we're going to do that at our September School Committee meeting and that will be on June 8th. You may remember there was a suggestion to hold our September meeting in Kingston so it will work out well. Debbie Grace has been working with people that have been working on landscaping. The Fox Rock Property Company donated a lot of work there. The school committees will be purchasing a tree and a memorial rock that we'll be dedicating to Joe and we can invite the family to them. So if everyone is in agreement, I'd like to stand for a moment of silence to recognize our dear friend Joe. I'd like to now take nominations for Chair of the Silver Lake School Committee.
I move that we nominate Paula Hatch as Chair of Silver Lake.
Any other nominations?
I'd nominate Mr. Fraser.
Okay.
Will you call nominations?
Okay. All those in favor of Paula Hatch? All those in favor of Mr. Fraser? Looks like Paula's the winner. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice to have you back.
Right now.
And I have some enormous, enormous shoes to fill and I'll do my best. Thank you, folks. Could we now have nominations for Vice Chair, please?
Paul, I would nominate Jim Walmart.
Second? Thank you.
I'll nominate Mr. Fraser.
Will you call nominations?
Was there a second?
You technically don't have to have a second if it's time.
Okay. All those in favor of Jim? Please raise your hand. All those in favor of Jason? Please raise your hand. Jim? I welcome you as Vice Chair. Nominations for Secretary, please?
I guess I'll nominate myself.
Any other nominations? Okay. I move to close nominations. All those in favor of Maureen? Thank you. Congratulations, Maureen. Nominations for Treasurer, which is a very important role and again, some big shoes to fill. Mark?
I nominate Mr. Fraser, please.
Second.
Any other nominations for Treasurer? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Nominations for Assistant Treasurer? Maureen?
I nominate Angie May.
My second. Any other nominations? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ed. Legislative Agent, nominations for that, please?
I nominate Jason Fraser. He's going to take it on.
Any other nominations?
Will you call nominations?
All those in favor, Jason? Thank you. Thank you, Jason. The subcommittees, there's only a couple of subcommittees that need to be populated tonight. The rest of them, we tend to do the second meeting after reorganization. Eric, that also gives you a chance to chat with us about what the subcommittees are, the commitment, et cetera, and allow you to choose wisely as well. The first, I'm going to suggest we fill Building and Grounds because of the Kingston purchase of land project that's going on. I think it's probably wise of us to fill that one tonight. Who is interested in participating in that? Okay. All right. Mark, do you want to stay on? I do. Maureen, Jason, Mark, Jim, Ed, and you do as, Eric. Mark, were you as well? No.
I was, but if everybody's going to be, we can't all be on.
Right. Eric, would you?
I can pull off and do something else.
You can take me off too, Paula.
We got an extra one.
What did he say? Eric, would you like to? Because it...
I'd be...
Okay. Sure. All right. Okay, Lisa, so I think we have Mark, Maureen, Ed, Jason, and Jim staying on with Eric.
You and Eric have us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the second one, PAC, we need to also fill tonight.
I nominate Maureen.
Okay. Maureen, you okay with that?
Yes, I'll do it.
Okay. I think that's probably it. Okay. All right. We were going to begin tonight's meeting with, sorry.
In the past, the chair has asked the members to contact me if they want to use the...
Particular subcommittee?
... subcommittee and then I brought a forward at the next meeting. Do you want to do that as well or do you want to wait?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, let's follow that same format. Next on the agenda was going to be student presentations. We had two different student presentations lined up for tonight, both of which have to be put off for future meetings because of commitment and scheduling issues, so we do not have any student presentations tonight. Public participation, is there anybody who wishes to participate at this time? Okay. Seeing none? Minutes, approval of the minutes.
I will nominate a couple of 2016.
Okay. Is there a second? Ed? Okay. All those in favor? Oppose? Anybody abstaining? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mark, I'm sorry.
I'm sure that the light of the fact is a large group of people receiving presentation are likely to take that order and propose to hire your students so that they can belong to other meetings.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So the topic that we're going to talk about is the Kingston Project to purchase land from Silver Lake Region. And I think what I'm going to suggest is, first of all, I'd like to take any public participation on this topic and then I think what I'd like to do is have Fred give us an update and a perspective for our benefit. We have three different versions of the special legislation that have been drafted for us. Our goal tonight, one of our goals, would be to finalize that and agree upon a draft that we would have moved forward on our behalf. So having said that, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this topic? Certainly. Could you give your name, please?
Sure. Just right here or is there a mic? Fine.
Right there is probably fine. I think these will probably...
There's a center man.
Pick it up.
Okay. All right. I'm fine, okay. I'm Jay Townham and I'm a town council for the town of Kingston. I've met several of you before and Fred and I enjoy it and have had a lot of talks and emails back and forth about this. Thank you very much for putting it on the agenda for another discussion on this. I think in fact, you know, what Fred has to say is pretty important for you. I wouldn't say that there's misinformation at all about this. I just think that there's been a lot of back and forth between myself and Fred and DESI and then the State Representative's Office, who was helpful. Fred and I have discussed several different possible special acts. Those acts were being drafted in and around both before and after the time that House Council was able to give their opinion on some of the methods that we come, that we came to. Ultimately, they gave an opinion from House Council, kind of cut to the chase, but I think we know more or less what project we're talking about, but just in terms of legalistics, that while the town of Kingston certainly needs a town meeting vote to appropriate money to purchase and approve the purchase of land, the other two towns, no town meeting vote is required at all under law. There is no district-wide vote required either or any kind of home rule type of vote required. Rather, just this committee can take a vote to authorize the acceptance of the special act. The version that the House came back with in terms of the special act is really just a single paragraph. It's just that simple and that is that it would authorize the committee to sell the land provided that it's fair market value. There are other discussions and agreements that we've come to and arrived at in terms of how that money gets channeled, which we're perfectly happy to honor and complete as we've always talked about in terms of where that money goes and how it goes. Nothing has changed there, but in terms of the actual legal authority that the state would require for, to get this done from a special act purpose, they see it as very stripped down. This committee has the authority through kind of almost non-statute out there, as Fred and I have wrestled with a lot. There is a paucity of law on exactly what guy does and we've struggled with it. We've asked a million people, we've asked all of our brethren in the town council and school council business. We get a whole bunch of different answers. So they've really short-circuited that by saying, as they've done in previous occasions, whether it was with Pembroke or granting amisms here or for other communities, "Look, you guys, if you're interested in conveying the property, here's a special act that gives you that authority. It sets fair market value as determined by appraisal at the source and go have at it if you want. No need to make it any more complicated than that." So I think the matter before you in terms of a vote today is really just to authorize essentially what the state suggested is to propose form a special act, which is to just get the authority to convey as you see fit. The only town that has to have a townwide vote on this is the town of Kingston, which we intend to take on Saturdays.
Jay, what did you mean by, you mentioned Pembroke and what you just shared with us? What did you mean when you mentioned Pembroke?
So in terms of everything that happened in terms of Pembroke and all the relationships and all that, there was special legislation to accomplish that. There was special legislation, I believe, in also 2001 with respect to certain amisms. The problem with the regional school districts conveying property is that while there are statutes that talk about them obtaining property, there is, there are zero statutes that talk about how they can convey. There's a bunch of theories on how that might work and Fred and I were chasing down some of them through our various sources, but there is no true agreement out there as to whether or not a regional school district has the authority to actually convey land. The simplest solution at the end of the day, and it was always an option that we had on the table from the beginning of the discussions, was that you can go get a special act to accomplish that. That's what it's devolved into, is that. So in all circumstances, essentially what we're finding out here is that if the regional school district wants to sell property, you need special legislation to do it. You don't need a second round of legislation through all the local town meetings to do it because you are yourself kind of a body politic, a municipal corporation unto yourself which has the authority to do certain things provided you get legislative authority to do it. So you have, you control the property. It was granted to, this property was granted to the school committee in the '50s, interestingly enough, not with any town meeting votes whatsoever, despite the feeling that there probably should have been town meeting votes to begin with. We've searched all the records. There are zero votes approving the purchase of land. There are votes authorizing the creation of the committee and the district, but the land just came in and everything went okay. No one complained about it. It wasn't technically proper, I suppose, but here we are and there's a lot of scrutiny and we want to make sure we do it right. We want to make sure that there's no holes in that. And as a town council for a whole bunch of towns, the simplest way to kind of pave over any cracks or holes in it is to make sure the legislature is okay with it. So whenever we have a situation as a town, whether it's this town or any other town that needs fixing that we don't have a statute for, what we do is go and get special legislation. I'd say I do it three, four times a year for the towns I represent. It's not uncommon. We actually worked ahead of time to get the approval of House Council on the form of it. They stripped it down to its bare essence and that's what we would ask the committee to endorse.
Any, members have any comments or questions? Would you? Go ahead, sure.
My question, and I apologize, I'm here to the committee, so I haven't been involved in this, but when the town of Kingston does purchase this land, what happens to that money? Does that money go to the three different towns? Does it stay within the district? What happens?
It does get allocated back, Eric, based on the allocation per town that we have. However, Kingston has offered their share of the money back and is planning to gift it back to Silver Lake.
For capital purposes or really whatever purposes the committee so desires, but that has been on the table. And again, you're kind of, this is a patchwork of exactly how this is treated because there's not a whole lot written on it. But we've been pleased for several months now after our initial discussions on this, we talked about a share of it and we just, easiest thing to do would be give all of our share back to the, back to the district and use it for capital or whatever one-time revenues. It's a one-time revenue source that if you felt you wanted to use it for operating, I think we'd be okay with that too.
Right.
But it'd seem logical to channel it into capital. So our share, which is, you know, the bigger of the shares, we're happy to send right back.
Maureen, and then Ed.
To be clear on that, the purchase and sale agreement specifically says it's a capital account. You can't use it just in...
Well, we don't have a signed purchase until agreement yet.
Oh, great. We may not have one anyway this morning. I'm from the town of Alphatack and I believe that my town would be yours if they do not have savings. We've got through this with Indian Pembroke money. We're constantly being debt looking trying to post something. Honestly, I feel that the town of Kingston has not done their job to sell to Alphatack. No one has came to tell me this grant that took it off the table, tell me that there's been no excitement about it. To me, the police station in Alphatack and Puntin shouldn't be talking about. They're on board with this and I believe she that they are. Why would you know what's going on? That's why when it came up and started to be discussed, we were going, no, hey, why would we be here in Kingston? Jason, why don't you walk with it to the other side? I think it needs to be sold in order for this to pass. And I walk all the way to just Kingston to do it. I'm not going to take my seat from the town of Puntin and just blow it up like we don't have a set.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen.
Two things. I've gotten feelings that not everybody in Alphatack is interested in this.
Here it is.
Oh, I've gotten the interest, I've gotten the hints that not everybody in Alphatack is interested in this, number one. I personally don't. I see it, but I agree with Maureen as to how it should be handled. Also, I have a question from the audience over there for something you don't know.
Sure. Gordon, go ahead.
So Gordon, I'm the Chair of Alphatack Finance Committee. Just, the only issue that I have would be to replace the land at a future value. I think we need to sell a piece of land at 250,000 dollars, five acres that gives you the frontage on 27. You're not going to be able to replace that at a future point in time, the same money at the same inflation rate. You're going to have to look at purchase homes up here if you're going to look to purchase that frontage back. We don't know what the future's going to hold. When I went to Silver Lake, we didn't have a junior high here and that was, I graduated in 98, there was no junior high there. You don't know what's going to happen. If you sell a piece of land, is it going to fall on that view in the future? I don't think it makes sense.
Thank you. Jason?
Just to speak to Gordon's concerns, I've been trying to vote on the idea of having a police station on campus or adjacent to campus. We've addressed the issue of frontage and the design of the lot is still allowed Silver Lake to have as many frontages as possible while still giving the police station access to the road as well. I have to concur to my fellow citizens. I've spent a ton of political capital in my own town trying to move this idea forward. I've done that with some resistance and a lot of people who are in building because they don't feel like they've heard enough about it from other sources that they're myself. I would still be willing to speak to my townsfolk about this, but I would love to do them a say in that.
Anybody else from the committee or outside the committee? I have, oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead, Mark.
I was on the land search committee when we went to look and we built the old school that you just brought up. And we searched Puntin and we searched Alphatack. And I think the next piece of land, the ideal piece of land to have built that school on was actually in another town. We ended up here because the land was difficult to find and I agree with you. However, the particular parcel we're talking about is not really big enough to do a lot with as it seems. And I share your concern that you can't replace land that fits out there, but I think the likelihood of building any additional Silver Lake property in Kingston, I think, would be, would be more harmful, just because you have the opportunity as a regional system to diversify some of the resources. The advantage though, I can speak to it other like this, the town of Kingston has the infrastructure, the water, the police, the fire. And every other place we tried to build a school would require us to buy a fire engine or to somehow create wells, well sites. It's very expensive in both, both communities. So, you know, that speaks to both sides of that, that issue. I think the police station on this property, the piece of property we have actually becomes worth more. I know that doesn't sound like one-to-one math, but the access that will be provided by the design of the police station has to provide better access to the main piece of land that we have. If you look at it, it's a pie basically with the tip cut off that's on 27. And by developing the property deeper, it actually becomes worth more to Silver Lake for the facility. But what we could possibly use it for? You can't put another whole middle school on it. You can't put a, you know what I'm saying, it's just not, even if all 20 acres of Upland were available, which based on the weapon issues and other things, setbacks, you're not going to be able to do that. So I share the town of Alphatack's concern. I'm sure there's an economic concern because the town of Alphatack and Puntin are going to benefit from the gift from the town of Kingston. To just briefly speak to the vote, I think it's important that all three towns feel franchised by this. However, this school committee has tried very hard to do our best to create for the benefit of all three towns this, this regional school system. And if we take every decision and we throw it back to the, to the towns, I question whether or not we as a school committee, you know, every single decision, this particular one drives offense and I'm happy either way to go whether or not the towns need to approve this as all three or whether or not we want to pursue the address Kingston, that town here. I'm either way on the fence.
Okay. Thank you. Sure, Gordon, go ahead.
Do you think that that would give you access to build administration buildings up there? I know that that's one of the items that we're talking about next month with Silver Lake and I would say going back to its current position, I don't know if you guys have talked about it long term.
I agree with that for a great long term. When we look at administration buildings, the current administration building or additions are the most cost-effective way to do that. The gift that we are trying earmarked to do that will pay for the majority of that in hope adding on to the building we have. If we tried to build an administration building, we have to do that without state funding and it's over a million dollars to do that to come close to what we would need for the administration that we have today without any expansion. So I think, I would think to come to the Alphatack Finance Committee and ask for your share of a million dollars to go ahead and do that because I have a feeling that's important.
Jason?
Just to speak further into the future, Gordon, we have thought of what that parcel that would be left, what it's going to be used for in the future. And we've discussed things as extensive as sometime in the distant future, maybe administration building or potentially bringing a special type of office to a campus as well. But we can't mask our intent right now. The intent is just to preserve the piece of land that would be left to be available to us for future development and we have no intent to develop it at this point.
Gordon?
So if you did build a police station on that piece of land, what could be left on that piece of land?
We'd be left with about two and a half acres of Upland in that field if we didn't sell the land to the station committee because a lot of the land is actually buttoned and unbuildable. And the agreement that we made with them is a different portion.
It is four.
Along with...
Four. Yeah, it's four Upland, one, one wet.
Four Upland, one?
Yeah.
But it would give us four more acres of builtable land.
We have looked into what we could use it for, just right now we don't have that many. We have tried to forecast into the future class sizes, as we know, Puntin and Alphatack are the lower class sizes now and we have an historical record in recent history. Kingston has a little bit of a bump in terms of balance in that, so we don't project that in the town in the future, expanding either building, but we're trying to prognosticate and know how that works.
Maureen?
I think you'll agree with Mark, as anybody knows. I have to go back to what you said about that we are the elected officials on school committee and I find it very frustrating that the members of the other towns, even the town of Kingston, come here after we've worked on this over a year and a half, done I.D. delogations, had an appraisal done, argue back and forth with the town of Kingston as to what we want and didn't want. And now you're questioning us. This has been on the need, on the need every month over a year and a half. And now you're asking us, well, did you check on this? Did you check on that? Where's everybody at all along? You're guessing us at the end, at the end of all that work. So what are we here for? I don't know.
Gordon, I'm going to let you respond and I think we might want to rein the conversation back from talking. We've already drafted a purchase and sale. Our intent tonight is to look at the special legislation, what language we want to vote on and, and move forward in that way. I apologize, I'm going to let Gordon speak first.
I know that I've missed a few meetings over the last year, but I've been there for most of them and really have not related to this issue at those meetings. Again, make every meeting and I apologize if you guys have talked about it and I have a question about this. If I should be able to...
I don't know. The past few months we've discussed it. We've been trying to ask questions. We're at the end of it now.
I would just note that the members in Alphatack would at least ask the citizens of Alphatack at the local town meeting whether or not they should, they should sell it or not.
Okay. Thank you, Gordon.
One of the, the clarification.
Just a brief clarification, the parcel that you're looking at, that we're looking at is 20 acres in total. Half of that, 10 acres in...
Half of that, ten acres in wetlands. We are looking at one acre of wetland and four acres of Upland, leaving you six acres of Upland.
I think we're, I think we're left with even more.
Plus the ten. So it leaves you sixteen acres.
And two hundred feet of frontage, too.
And two hundred feet of frontage.
So, Stuart, I want to get, we're obviously completely respectful of whatever vote you take, and we're going to have to live with whatever vote you take, right? And I'm not trying to engage in brinksmanship or anything else like that, but from a practical perspective, I mean, we view this police complex as being a net positive right next, right near the school. We think a public safety complex makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons right here. If a town meeting vote is required for all three towns by this committee, that means it's a two, because of the way overrides work, that means it's a two thousand seventeen event, which means it'll happen then. Given the practicalities as we understand it, could we look at the landscape and see what the likelihood of it passing all three towns would be? It has not looked favorable from at least one of the other two towns in terms of passage. I think if you took the vote now to push us into that two thousand seventeen calendar, I think we're, we are left with no other choice but to look at alternative properties because our police facility right now is not adequate. And knowing how one of those votes could go, we could be pushed into another. If it was a negative vote in two thousand seventeen, then we're looking to maybe get a piece of property in two thousand eighteen. As Mr. Guidoboni said, finding property is not easy. So the net effect likely of requiring a referendum in all, by all three town meetings is that we're probably going to have to strongly consider, if not completely move, to a different location. It's just, it's just the nature of the beast. I'm not doing it to scare anyone off or anything else like that, but there are practical effects to these types of votes, and that is a practical effect for us. Sandy and her crew and the chief have been looking at this for a long time. It's a difficult decision to make. We're trying to be as accommodating as possible, but that is a reality for us. So I just, you know, for whatever that's worth, it, there it is.
Thank you. One more comment, then I'd like to bring it back to the committee.
Just a, just a comment also. If we have to go into seventeen or eighteen, it also increases our construction costs by ten, fifteen percent, and we won't be able to sell that to our, our town either. So that's another reason why I completely agree with Jay.
Thank you. Mark.
I'd just like to add that since I've been on the committee, with very, very few exceptions, the municipal support that the town of Kingston has offered to our regional school, whether it's police and fire response, these things are all costly items that are supported. And we haven't received the bill from the town of Kingston for that type of support. I mean, other than the utility bills, obviously. So I think when we look at Plumpton and Halifax, they should look at this as a small way to pay back the town of Kingston for that municipal support that Kingston has the resources to provide. But it still requires the police cruiser to respond when there's a fight up here or any other incident that takes place. And I think when the citizens of Halifax and Plumpton look at the whole, we're all fearful. And again, I don't know how concerned they really are. We could have a public hearing next week, and I'll be surprised if a couple dozen people came to that. Concerned enough to even discuss it. So I, like you said, I'm willing to go either way, but at this particular point, I think if we had an opportunity to bring in some resources for funding from the gift, and we have an opportunity to put a facility, a safety factor next door, adjacent to this facility, I think we should consider getting that offer going forward.
Maureen, did you have a comment?
Yes. I've changed my mind. I thought about what Mark was saying, and I thought about what Gordon was saying, and I thought about the last twenty years that I've been sitting on this board and how we work our hardest and spend as much time as possible to be transparent to our towns, and they ignored our work. And they basically said, you know, no, we don't like it. They didn't check to see what we were. So I'm going to change my vote, and I, even though Fred and I already talked about this, I, I'm going to vote for the town of Kingston in the regional financing process.
Okay. Fred, do you want to share with us a little bit about the three drafts we have in front of us and what perspective you bring to the table? And then I, I think we can talk about the draft specifically.
Yeah, so with regard to the three drafts, I mean, one of the drafts indicates that it would require the vote of the three towns. Another draft indicates the vote of Silver Lake and Kingston. And the third is the, is the House draft. So I agree with House counsel, nothing needs my review, but that the legislation would be legal, you know, if presented and voted by the town of Kingston and by the Silver Lake Regional School District. I also think that the offer by Kingston is very fair, and I recommended the purchase and sale agreement be executed. I also am construction counsel for several school systems and numerous over the years. In fact, I have two construction projects right now for school districts where I'm construction counsel. And the lot is virtually useless for the school district that Kingston wants to purchase, that small piece. So we could do something with the remaining piece, but the piece is small enough that realistically, any building project on that particular property would not be substantial. I mean, you can't build a school building, it's simply too small. You can't build an elementary school because it's simply too small. I don't think you could use it for any school building purpose. However, the perspective that I take is the perspective of what a regional school district actually is. Because a regional school district is simply an agreement among towns to form that region. And the land is owned by all of those three towns. So if there was a sale, it would have to be distributed among the three towns. So to say that two towns would be disenfranchised from a vote belies the concept of actually being the creation of the towns. And so even though the regional school district has that authority through the special legislation, it's not the concept of the regional school district. In my memory of Pembroke is it did go to the towns and was voted by the towns. And there was special legislation. But all the towns had input in the agreement that was reached, and they voted in favor of that particular agreement. So my concern is the disenfranchisement of two towns of the three towns in the region. And I think that that will have a long-term negative effect. I'm willing to go out there myself along with the committee if they support the sale and work with Plumpton and Halifax to get a positive vote. But I don't believe it's in the best interest of the region now or long-term to disenfranchise two of the towns from the vote. So that's my opinion. And so what I would suggest is voting the draft that I think is the first in the document, which is the one that requires the votes of the three towns.
That's the one that you've drafted, Fred? Yep.
Over.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'd just like to ask Fred, in lieu of the town meeting versus, is there a possibility of having a board of selectmen for the three towns to approve this issue? Kingston, obviously, is a funding issue. They have to take it to town meeting. But the other two have functioning boards of selectmen that could.
If the legislation was drafted that way, now we've deferred the House counsel, but I don't see why that couldn't work.
And that would at least keep the timeframe rolling forward and.
But I would leave that, the legal opinion on that to the House counsel.
But I mean, at that point, if no vote from the two towns is required at all, if we add another layer and say that the board of selectmen from the three towns would have to support it, at least the board of selectmen could field any issues, questions from citizen group prior to that vote, and they could move that forward.
Yeah, I think the problem with that is if the board of selectmen doesn't wish to vote on it, but they can't compel the vote. And so I think the negative of that is it may be easier to get the town meeting to vote on it, have it on the one article, than the potential of the board of selectmen who can simply ignore the request.
Well, that would be approval by the House.
Well, depending on how the legislation was written, if it's written that there has to be approval, then it would have to be approval.
And did you still have?
Yeah, Fred, if it went to a vote between the three towns, would it have to be unanimous all three towns?
But that's the way this is drafted, that it would be unanimous. You see, there's certain times where, in certain statutes, where it only needs to be a two-thirds vote. And the example is the budget, which only requires the two-thirds vote. But one of the reasons why the legislation is written that way is you have to have a budget. And there has to be a deadlock in, a mechanism to break the deadlock. And the ultimate breaking of a deadlock is that if you don't have a budget by December one, the state comes in and takes over the running of the school system and the financial commitment of the school system. So that's why you have legislation to break the deadlock. But in this particular circumstance, there isn't anything that compels us to sell a land. And don't get me wrong, I think you should sell the land. I think you should sell the land to Kingston. I think that their offer is more than fair. And I think their offer is advantageous to us because that land, what they're offering us, that land, I don't believe is worth now and doesn't have that value to a spiritualistic rate because of the lack of realistic potential to build on that land. However, I don't think the committee, which is the creature of the three towns, should say, I'm just going to ignore you and enter into this agreement with Kingston where you are going to be a beneficiary of that particular sale because you are going to get your proportion of the money, but without the vote of, and the voice of the electorate. And that is a good way to do permanent damage to a region. I represent probably fifteen regional school districts and that's chooses. And those type of decisions, the ones that usually come back to haunt you, and they will haunt you twenty years into the future. And that's been my experience. And so my advice, and I don't vote on anything, is simply that we use the power of persuasion, even if it takes a year longer. And I think when all the pluses are clearly spelled out and discussed in detail, that I would think that both all three towns would vote in favor of this because I think it is beneficial to all three towns, and we aren't losing anything by this sale. And I think that Kingston, if anything, has made more than a fair offer. And we've gone back and forth on purchase and sale agreement many times. I think it's fair. It's been very good working with town council in Kingston, who has been very upfront and worked diligently to bring this particular document to the place where it is. Having said that, I, I think it is an extremely poor idea to disenfranchise the vote of two towns.
Could I just ask one question before, and then Eric? When we withdrew from, when Pembroke withdrew, did we have to have all three remaining towns vote in favor of the withdrawal of Pembroke?
Yeah, all the towns voted in favor of.
They did, but was it required for that withdrawal to go through?
I believe it was required by the regional school district agreement.
Okay.
Now, the regional school district agreement is silent on this issue. And by the way, even if it was in the regional school district agreement, it wouldn't necessarily have then legally affected any of us. Because the, the opinion now of Desi is that the only way that you can sell this property is through special legislation. And oddly enough, they said that you should do it the way you did it with Pembroke, because they, without knowing I represented Silver Lake during that time period, they said Silver Lake did it correctly at that particular time, and I said a very similar thing.
Thanks, Fred. I'm sorry, Eric first.
Sure. So I, I know there's a longstanding history of some ill will between some of the municipal boards and this regional school committee. A lot of it seems to be political and not really surrounding what's in the best interest of education and the students, which is why we're here. And we've all been elected, some worry certainly, by our respective towns to represent our towns, but also to look out for the students here, the education, the buildings, the property, everything else. And we've been elected to make those decisions. In this case, and I think Fred makes some good points, but in this case, there's no, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there is no law that says that the sale of property under a regional school district needs to go to a vote of all three towns. In this case, it's going to vote in Kingston because they're, they need to vote on purchasing it, not selling it. I know in this case, it's sort of one and the same. They're selling it, but they're, they're buying it, too. So, I mean, again, I think we're here to do what's best for the students, and if we just cut politics out of this, and, I mean, this has been going on for a year and a half. There's been plenty of opportunity for discussion, there's been objections made, and I, from what I understand, the objections have been met. Again, I'm new, so if there's objections that have not been explained to the satisfaction of some of the other towns, I, I don't know what to say, but it's been going on for a year and a half. So what's best, in my opinion, what's in the best interest of the students is to have public safety this close and on the same campus. You know, putting this off and requiring two other towns to vote positively, in my opinion, you can kiss it goodbye. I don't see it happening. I mean, I know you could try to push it forward, but the, I just don't understand the objections, and I don't think it would go through. So I think we need to put the politics aside, and I know what you're saying in terms of long-term, but if people are looking back at this ten years from now, they're going to know that we had these discussions for a year and a half. And maybe there were some discussions with these other towns and these other committees with objections, but I, I don't know what they are.
Two more comments, then I'm going to see if there's any sort of motion at this point you want to make. Mark and then, Mark, Mark and then Mark.
I'll go first. I was elected by the entire town of Halifax, and I represent the entire town of Halifax. And my straw poll of town of Halifax, I will not vote for just Kingston. My people deserve a right to say what they want to say. Mr. Talerman is sitting here telling me I should overvote my town because he's alluding to the fact that one town will not vote for it. I am not going to do that. I will not vote for just Kingston having it. Your turn, Mark.
Sure. Couple of logistic timeframes. Halifax already has a special town meeting coming up in the fall. And so we're dealing with a Plumpton town meeting, which I don't think the expense is going to be substantial, based on what I'm hearing from a Plumpton representative over here. I mean, is that couple of months going to really set us back? The other thing we could do is if we make my fellow colleague from Halifax more comfortable, we could advertise a public hearing in our next meeting, have all the people that are upset with this decision show up. And then when we're still sitting here with about the same number of people we have in the room, we could probably move that forward. Because I really don't think this is hot on the inner discussion in any of the three towns, to be honest with you. But like I said before, I'm comfortable going either way. I don't know if the logistics of a Plumpton special town meeting, we discuss this, we need to go through. I just share Maureen's concern that the autonomy of this committee, we were elected to represent our towns, we were elected to make decisions, and I really hope that when we want to sell the tractor, we're not going to have to send it back to three towns. There's a substantial difference in this and splitting up as a region, okay? There was real estate involved with that, but there was. There was real estate involved with that, but there was also the entire concept of rearranging and splitting a regional school district. And that certainly should have haunted all the towns. But I guess the argument is, is real estate enough of a commodity to set itself apart from everything else that we make decisions about? As far as, we get rid of property all the time, desks, chairs, tractors, trucks, everything. I really hope that we can do that without going back to three towns.
Just on the timing.
Okay.
So, September 21st is our deadline for us to catch this fiscal year because the override vote would have to be in and certified by September 21st. So, a fall town meeting has us into the whole 2000 fiscal year, probably 2018 timeframe. So, if we can't lock up all the necessary approvals before September 21st, then we're into the cycle that I mentioned.
That's an overlap of your funding, of the whole lease station?
Correct.
One more question. What is, based on your conversations, what is Halifax upset with about selling the land?
They don't have, they feel we don't have a right to sell the land without them voting for it because they were involved, the town is involved in the creation of the regional school district.
But it's not in the statute, so I guess my question is, what is, what is the problem that people have with selling the land? Do they not want the land? Do they want, you said they don't want Kingston to have it. Are you talking about the vote?
No, they just don't want to sell the land. It's not personal against Kingston or anybody else.
No, I mean, they don't want Kingston to have the land or they don't want Kingston to have the vote to buy the land?
I'm saying I'm not going to let Kingston vote alone to buy the land. The town of Halifax, the people I talk to are telling me that they don't want this school committee to sell the land, period.
So, they want to keep the land. For what? Because there's no money in the region to do anything with it, anything here. I mean, we're cutting all kinds of things. Halifax is cutting the budget every year. I mean, there's no money to develop anything.
I'm aware of that, I live in town. Thank you Eric, I know what goes on in my town.
Oh, I know. So, there's no money to develop anything. With, I mean, with, that, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, we have, we have an opportunity to bring public safety right here on campus.
Yes.
With the heroin epidemic going on, it would be great to have public safety pretty close, to have police walking around.
And I'm not saying I'm not for putting that police station there. I'm saying I'm not voting for another town besides the town of Halifax voting, yes, they can do it.
But that's, see, that's political. Why don't we just look at what's best for, for the regional school district? That's my, I'll leave it at that, but I mean, that's what we're here for.
You can have your opinion and I'll have mine, Eric. Welcome.
Jim, and then I'd like to see if there's any motions at this point.
We're all elected representatives of our own towns. We do represent our towns, so I don't, I don't see how the towns are disenfranchised. They're represented by the town meeting members, I'm sorry, by the school committee meeting members from the towns. So, if we have a member in the committee that wants to vote against us before his town, then I think that represents the town. I don't see how they're disenfranchised. I think we're all representing our individual towns for the benefit of our kids and we vote for our towns and our kids.
At this point, would anybody from the committee like to make any motion? We have three drafts in front of us. I think really two, we're really looking at Fred's and Jay's and then I think Tom's, dovetails from what we agree to.
Before we, could we have the different ones labeled in some way in terms of?
At the top?
The only thing that's really different in the two, because I tracked, I didn't have an issue with the majority of it, except when we got through the final paragraph. So, I think there is a tracked version. And the tracked version only makes, pardon, I think it's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, right.
And there is a tracked version, all I did was add the other two towns, so there were three towns.
So, one version has three towns, has the vote, one version doesn't.
True.
Okay, so whatever motion we threw to vote should be voting on this, that we're voting on.
Okay. Agreed, agreed. Would anyone from the committee like to make a motion? Maureen?
I approve Silver Lake Regional School District, except the act regarding the sale of land by Silver, by Silver Regional School District. Item number four on section three, the purchase contemplated grant is also subject to prior approval by the town of Kingston acting by infomercials.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've had a lot of discussion. I, I'm going to actually take a vote. I'm going to, show of hands please, on the vote.
Before you do that, just to be clear, the one that she's, that she just motioned was the one where it's just Kingston?
Only Kingston.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All those in favor of putting forth that motion, raise a hand please. All those opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay. The motion carries.
The motion carries, it's going to the town of Kingston, congratulations.
Thank you. We have to make any motions, we're afraid to take this.
Thank you.
Fred, should you what?
To go to the next step.
I already had the authority, the work of the town of Kingston on this issue. So, I just, I think the building and ground to myself would just continue, although I think pretty much all the work is done because the purchase and sale had been reviewed. I think it has to be voted by the school committee to purchase and sell, because I don't think that's been done. But other than that, I think that we're pretty much done.
Do we have a, I just have one question. We were sort of in the eleventh hour with the purchase and sale. Had we vetted all comments? Do we have, we did?
I believe, considering I had come back probably a dozen times, I assume Mark was involved in it and Joel was asked if he was very involved in it as well. I think we're at the end, we were waiting to put up this last piece. There was a question on who's going to sign to the school committee, that was the only question since some of the people have left, how does that change out?
Right. So, the last version of the document, who is the, usually have the, the school committee would vote it and authorize the chair to sign it.
Joe had made an amendment to have the chair, the vice chair, the treasurer and the assistant treasurer as signatories?
I believe that's.
All of them as signatories?
Off there.
The chair and treasurer?
The chair and the treasurer.
Just the chair, just the chair and the treasurer.
Yeah, so, what, you know, and you could decide to keep that vote or revote it, but you have to, we have to bring the purchase and sale to the full school committee for a vote. Because that's what's going to be discussed at town meeting. So, I don't know when your next school committee meeting is.
I suspect they need that vote because their town meeting is Saturday.
We don't need the PNS for the town meeting vote.
No.
We can authorize the selectmen to enter into a suitable purchase and sale agreement. I think it's really just tinkering to match it up with where we are right now. And however you guys vote in terms of authorization and execution is fine.
But I don't disagree with that. I mean, I was saying that at some point in time, the school committee has to vote.
Yeah, someone's got to sign, so. In terms of the version, Fred, just, I'm going to inform the State House that you and I will make sure we got the exact language right, you and I have a bunch of red lines before we get it back to them.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And by the way, I'm in the office tomorrow. I don't know if you are, but if you are, you could send it to me.
Okay. I want to make sure I have the right version, so I'll go back through the.
It doesn't have to be tomorrow.
It's not 21.
And then, I would also want a copy of that report.
Yep. What I would do is, when we get that version, it will be sent to everyone who's in the room. So, you get a final look at the final document.
Could I get a copy of it as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank you to the committee for all of their work on this and all the questions and all the deliberation. I really believe that you have the best interest of the students at heart and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to vet it as long as we did. It's too big of a topic to have kind of reined in the discussion, it needed to be fully vetted.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right then, reports of committees. Silver Lake Educational Association.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
There was a guest in my family, I knew this was an important meeting, so I came here, but I'd like to leave at this point and kind of get back.
Please, and thank you, sorry to be the, and thank you for joining us. Hi.
Hi. I'm Dr. Mark, I'm the president of the SLVA. I'm getting a bit short tonight. I think you probably have a lot of meetings before us and we've had a lot of meeting already. So, I just want to thank the school committee for this year. I think we've had another successful year, which was evidenced last Saturday at our graduation. So many teachers dressed in black watching their kids graduate, well, our kids, your kids. It was a lot of pride. It's one of my favorite days of the year and I think I share that excitement with my colleagues and you can tell when you come in in the morning that we truly hold a sense of pride. So, as we're wrapping up, you would think that this time of year would be slowing down for us, but I think we are full speed ahead. I don't even know how many days are left because we have so much left to cram in that we want to make sure that our kids are learning. So, I'll end it there to say thank you and looking forward to another year with you guys next year.
Thank you. Mr. President, do you?
We have not had a meeting, but we're other colleagues.
Building grounds?
No further comment?
Career and technical edge?
We haven't had a meeting either and do not have a report from Director of Proceedings.
Okay. Chairman's report? I do not have a report. Legislative agent?
I do have a report.
You do?
It's rather lengthy.
You want to give us highlights?
I emailed some notes out to you all and it should be compacted. Just to give you a further update, the budget is in conference council right now. It's being hammered out between the Senate and House versions. There's some interesting language. The Senate version includes language about the ruling district determining measures, also known as DDMs. That's in the joint conference committee right now, they're trying to reconcile their language. DDMs have been seen as an unfunded mandate among districts and federal regulations no longer require them. So, the state of Massachusetts hopefully will be wise enough to give her something that's not being afforded. Another interesting piece of information, because of the change in federal legislation from No Child Left Behind to Every Student Succeeds Act, we also changed the accountability metrics allowed by each state. The DOE has asked for any information that you'd like to share with them, that you sent in via survey, to let them know where we should use for accountability metrics for the school districts. Last but not least, it sounds like Mr. Creed, last month, we missed our revenue again.
Say it more forcefully, Jason.
Come on. You've got to punch that, Jason.
The $311 million shortfall currently in fiscal year that's ending in one month. Governor Baker's secretary has indicated that they think they can manage that shortfall without any cuts or increases in taxes. If she can figure out how to do that, we would love to have her as one of our leaders. Last but not least, a reminder, there's been a lot of conversation about transgender students, transgender people and the press recently, there's been something going around the State House called the Bathroom Bill. And just wanted to remind us all that there's already legislation, both federal and state, to cover students and students' belongings, which this school and all schools in Union 31 are part of. We have to keep in mind, you know, this is a sensitive matter and we have the responsibility to make all families feel safe and secure and all in our schools. And last but not least, the chair of the Kingston Board of Selectmen would like me to remind you that they are having a moment for John on June 28th. There's a little reception starting at 5:00 and there'll be recognition at 6:00. I've been in touch with Blind Gootrich from MASC who pretty naked to our recognition and he's going to try and be there to give John some sort of recognition for all of his years of service. So, the invitation is there and I would see you on 28th.
Jason, can I ask, where exactly is that being held?
It's going to be right before the Board of Selectmen meeting, so I'll refer to my Kingston colleagues to let us know where that is. So, 5:00 is the reception, 6:00 is started their meeting, is going to be your recognition moment for John, then they'll enter into their regular meeting.
Okay. Negotiations.
We have not met, I'm happy to say that the SLVA contract is up 2017, so it's sure to be needing a lot after the fall. And the AIDS contract has been retyped up, it's ready to go. I was going to have him sign the first call and then give it back to Joe if he was, I will start with that.
Okay. Thank you. Pat, Maureen?
Oh, yeah, we actually met twice since we've seen each other last. The best part was that we had our graduation at the academy and Jason had attended it. Eighteen people, I think, eight young people that graduated. It was wonderful. If you ever have an opportunity to do it, obviously, it's, you know, completely different for us. Each child is recognized, you know, little anecdotes of how they ran or videos that belong there. The smiles and the gratitude on their faces and the future of the academy and the club are just amazing. I'm hoping that because of that and we're getting around, New Building, you know, Regal is open, we better move and run through some new classes there.
Wonderful. Thank you. Policy? No. Revenue Subcommittee. Treasurer's report, Jason?
There's a lot of warrant circulation, if you can move it that way, I appreciate that. There's fourteen regular warrants circulating tonight for a total of $955,160.65. There's also two payroll warrants circulating tonight for a total of $1,546,304.78. For a total circulating warrants of $2,501,465.43.
Thank you. Union 31?
Union 31.
Revolving funds?
Union 31.
Sleep study?
We're actually on hold, we're going to look at it at the end of the summer and we believe some of the people that are on the county are actually leaving the district, so we have to be here really, uh, in August.
Okay. Thank you. All righty now, Director of Business, our financial report.
I know you've been waiting for this.
Yes.
For tonight's report, I'm going to try to take a slightly different point of view. I wanted to bring to your attention some surpluses that we do have in our budget that we're looking at for the end of the year. If I can, when you look at the financial, I can slightly mislead because this doesn't account for all the things that it would still have to happen, for instance, all our payrolls and some payrolls, that's a significant amount of funding that's going to go into here. Some things I do want to bring to your attention, on page one of the detail, near the top of the page, there's a surplus in our legal account for $38,000. And the most significant piece of that is, that will come down because there are some invoices that haven't gone through there yet. But one of the most significant things is, when this budget was built, the decision had not yet been made to no longer continue with the Pembroke case following that next phase of it. So, we had built in some legal fits into this budget that we just haven't had to use. So, there's going to be some savings there. Another area I want to bring to your attention is on page five of the detail, in the middle of the page, it is the section on transportation. We have a surplus there right now of approximately $32,000. That will fall slightly because we're still waiting for some homeless transportation bills. But our homeless transportation has been slightly lower than it has been in the past couple of years. And then also on our transportation contract, we have a fuel clause and we have not had to pay any excess on the fuel clause. We're willing to get some credits for the fuel clause, so that's worked for us. And then the one other area I wanted to bring to your attention is our insurance account on page seven of the detail. You'll see right now, there is a surplus of approximately $70,000. That will increase because we're getting offsets back from our revolving and grant accounts for some of their employees, so they cover the district share for those folks. And we're unfortunate, we haven't had quite as many family plans as we had hoped and not everybody's chosen to have insurance, so we will have a surplus. and not everybody's chosen to have insurance, so we will have a surplus there. And then one of the things I did want to also bring to your attention, that one of the things this committee had asked us to look at is the possibility of funding this food service director's position this year. And based on the savings that we have, we believe we would be able to do that. There'd be sufficient funds to cover that to go us through the end of the year for school lunch.
Mark?
Just to clarify, the 70-plus thousands left over from this year?
In FY '16, yes. Correct.
How will we use that to fund next year's?
Well, we're gonna use it, this committee had hoped that we'd be able to fund part of this food services director this current year. We have already budgeted for next year to include the salary, but it looks like we'll be able to absorb that in this current year, the food service director's salary.
And can we, well, we did choose it.
In '16, we did not put anything in the budget for it. The hope was that we would be able to find a way to absorb it within the budget.
So we have revolving funds, and we're pretty good with regular budgets.
Correct.
For this coming year?
Yeah, because that's what only is education in night schools and all that. And now you're saying you want to put it back in the budget?
No.
The budget will be able to pay for that piece of his salary, for this food service directors. In FY '16, we'll be able to do that to alleviate some of the stress on the food service program.
So if we don't do that, what happens?
If we don't do that, what will happen is that school lunch will most likely end with a deficit at the end of the year.
Which is about $45,000 right now.
Yes.
Right now.
In your packet there, in your packet, I put together a report from David Ziole, and Mark Aubrey obviously looked at it. We are currently in the red about $45,000, $46,000. We will definitely be in the red at least his salary by the end of the school year. So one of the things the committee had talked about in the fall, it was John Creed's suggestion actually, was that if it were at all possible to pay for either his full salary or any portion of his salary to help offset, because we anticipated going in the red. So that's part of why Christine was bringing that up.
So I had some defined that before.
It looks like this.
This is the white one?
The white one. Does the middle pull the top?
It's time to issue, but I wanted to visit the revolving accounts at the summer. We have a journey, so Christine will come in and talk to you about it. I'm concerned that we're keeping these back and forth, and if the cafeteria can't support itself, we need to make some adjustments. The last report that we got from David, he never presented it because he was lost up along. And I have been looking at it recently, and there were a number of, he had added this smoothing thing, a sundae thing.
Smoothing, yep.
To the high school.
And yet there were like 45 less purchases. And I said, oh, wait a minute, how does that make sense? So I didn't have a chance to talk directly to him about it, but, you know, we have to face reality. We're not...
Mark?
Anecdotally, I can tell you, working in a high school, high school students don't eat much. They don't. They'll drink a coffee or Coke or whatever, but they do not eat. This is the story of why.
Maureen, I would agree with you. I would join that as well.
So let's just look at a rule of thumb and see if we can...
Okay.
Paul or I?
Do we need a motion to absorb? Yeah. Yeah. Is there a motion to?
We've got to move. We have to have a motion.
Right. Right. I'm asking, is there one? I know we talked about it several, several months ago, is there a motion to do that?
So we're making a motion to take, to move the food service position back into the budget?
Just, I think, taking, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just taking the salary from the revolving account for this fiscal year in moving it into the operating budget? Which is what we think, Christine.
I think you got to the point that the operating budget will be funding that.
Right.
Coming at the operating budget.
The whole or not, or partially not?
Right now, yeah, it would be his full salary, his full Silver Lake salary.
Well, I mean, that's what we've done going forward. We've moved it, and we're funding it out of the operating account. We didn't do it in the current fiscal year because we didn't know where we were gonna follow. But following protocol for what we hear other school systems do, as you know, Maureen, the salary for this type of role is out of the operating budget. But we didn't want to make that move this year if the funding wasn't there for it. Mark?
I'm just questioning the candidates. A year ago, we voted a budget, and the budget was in a certain amount. Revolving funds are not included in that budget.
Correct.
Okay, so now we're taking a line item, we're taking funds from a budget we voted. We can rearrange everything we want within the budget, but I don't remember the revolving fund being part of that.
They're not. What the, I believe the decision will be is to move his salary from the revolving account into the operating budget.
For the current fiscal year? If that's what we choose to do.
Well, basically, we voted a budget a year ago. As far as I'm concerned, the revolving fund, the budget, we can separate it by separate.
Correct.
We can rearrange everything we want within the budget sheet, but...
And that's what we'll be doing, using some of our savings in other areas to cover that portion of the salary.
Correct, within that, within that budget stuff. What we're doing is we're taking a budget surplus and instead of rolling over the E&amp;D, we're making an expense, and we're basically transferring it into the... What line item?
So we transfer his salary back into the budget.
But we're not, it's not against E&amp;D because she hasn't been arranging it. So we have to look at all any consequences that, you know, what we can do.
Right, but have we, have we restored and taken money from our operating budget and put money into our revolving fund? Because that's the same way we're doing it.
Last year, we made a decision to, to, I don't wanna say this, to cover the deficit that existed at school lunch. So we had, when the operating budget made a decision to cover that deficit that existed at school lunch. And then for this year, the operating budget would be absorbing his salary. But for FY '16, we had not budgeted for the salary, you are correct. But we had talked, the possibility existed because we knew the program was struggling. So there appeared to be sufficient surpluses in the budget that we could, the budget could absorb the impact of his salary.
Into a current line item, I just don't want to...
Actually, the current line item didn't exist here because we didn't add it to until our '17 budget. So I actually could add the line item, and it would be in the 3200 series. Actually, 3400 series. So it would end up being in the middle of...
In essence, we'd be moving the, oh, I'm sorry, the...
I was gonna say, it would end up being on page five. That's where food service would fall. We'd have to actually add the category.
Why can't we just follow last year's model and say, we're gonna cover the deficit including this position of the food service through the budget? And then we take the position out of it?
Because it may be a good consideration of one way.
We could end up with a further deficit in his salary. We have to come back and say that again.
Correct.
So if we just say we're going to cover the food service department deficit out of the budget of our operating budget, then we're good.
That's an option that would work also.
I'd so make a motion if we...
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There was just one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention. We had also talked about funding an OPEF fund, and we have a savings in our insurance account. That's one of the things we had talked about, trying to partially fund that. And we're looking at maybe up to $25,000 to fund towards OPEF. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention to see if that was something the committee would be agreeable to. And if we did decide to do that, what our auditors had suggested is that traditionally, closeout meetings for year-end have it by July 15. Because of logistics and scheduling, we're not able to do that because we're trying to close the four entities. So we wouldn't be doing that till July 21st. So our auditors just asked that we take, there'd be a motion suggesting that we understand traditionally that deadline to the 15th, but we're not meeting to the following week due to scheduling. And we would make those same decisions at that time that we would have made on the 15th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Other questions about the OPEF fund?
This is our first contribution to that?
This would be our first contribution, yes.
So we only have, how many millions is it now?
Our line bill is, oh, 26 million. But once we commit to a program, we commit to dealing with an entity that can help us with this, that should drop because when the studies are done, it's based on a rate of return of 4%. And once you have to start investing, that rate is higher in the book, so your liability falls because you don't have to fund quite so much.
Now, we have to set up a full-blown trust for this, right?
Well, because with such a small amount, we don't have to do the trust document just yet.
At what, and this is a discussion probably for a different time. Maureen, this goes back to the whole PAC conversation we had that night a couple of years ago. At what threshold does it throw us into discretionary trustee role?
The information that I received would be to the $250,000 level, so we're going to look into that.
Okay.
There are a couple of different models out there, so we're looking at to see what the possibilities are that it exists for us.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Assistant Superintendent?
Hello, good evening. I'm here to talk to you about the updated grants list. So in your packet, you have a copy of the upgraded, updated grants, grant allocations for 2015, 2016 school year. The first page is a comparison over the past 10 years that I thought it was important for you to take a look at. You'll notice that there appears to have been a peak for grants in the 2011 school year if you look at the overall amount awarded. Yet over the past five years, I think it's important to note that our grant funding has decreased. This is true in most districts. This is not just true to Silver Lake. So I just wanted to make that known. However, I would like to point out to you on page two, where you can see the specific allocations for each grant, that there is listed an E-Rate Category 2, that grant that is new this year. E-Rate typically provided discounted rates for telecommunications services. Just this year, a new category within E-Rate has been established to support the technology infrastructure within the buildings. So you'll see that that is a new grant that was awarded to us. And again, it is an entitlement grant. It's not a competitive grant, so every district is eligible for that. The last page in your packet highlights many donations and outside grants that teachers and staff have been awarded this year. This year, our staff have increased the amount received by almost $100,000 over last year's amount. While our state grant allocations are decreasing, our teachers are working hard to supplement this funding by outside resources. This includes donations from Donors Choose, picture proceeds from Life Touch, Target, Hannah Firds, and more. So I really would like to commend our staff and teachers for trying everything that they can to receive additional funding for programs that they're trying for. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions?
No questions, but you said you know over the last 10 years, the grants have gone down. And basically, we're still, it's the highest in three years, and it's the fifth highest overall for the last 20 years. So it's been up and down, but it's just not pulling you up.
Do the teachers go out and find these grants on their own and?
They do. There's, we had a big push this year to use such funding as Donors Choose, and a lot of teachers have gone out and looked for grants on their own. There are many opportunities that companies will, will put out emails, and many, many teachers have taken advantage of that. Donors Choose is something you can go online. Teachers will use their own social media to promote their projects and have friends and family and anybody that's within their social media to donate to their projects. And again, Donors Choose is just a small example of many of the grants that they receive. But it's been really remarkable because, you know, the grants are really to supplement and not supplant. So it's really important that we keep that in mind. And our teachers are allowed to be innovative and creative, and they're doing that by finding funding that can support those decisions. And of course, our administrators support the funding that they receive with the projects that they're doing. So it's really been a wonderful, wonderful revenue for them. But again, it's really, our teachers are remarkable at going to find the funding themselves.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Superintendent's report?
Thank you. One of the things I'd like to talk to you tonight, we just started this discussion in the fall. You may remember, we talked about updating our emergency protocol this year. We had meetings throughout the year with all of our police chiefs and fire chiefs. Mass General Law requires that each school district meet with fire and police chiefs to formulate a school-specific multi-hazard evacuation plan for each school under the superintendent's supervision. We had five meetings. Chief Spleen was kind enough to attend all of them and is here to support this initiative that we're taking. The meetings were attended by myself, Assistant Superintendent Chrissy Pruitt, Dennett Elementary School Principal, Halifax Elementary School Principal, Halifax Fire Chief, Halifax Police Chief, Kingston Elementary School Principal, the Kingston Firefighter, the Kingston Intermediate School Assistant Principal, again, the Kingston Police Chief, Mark Spleen, our school liaison officer, Craig Marshall, the Plimpton Fire Chief, the Plimpton Police Chief. It was organized by Assistant Principal Steve Bledt and also attended by Assistant Principal Jason Canetta, who's joining us this evening. There was a major change to our protocol, and we are going to be adopting a new approach. It's called the ALICE protocol. ALICE is an acronym, and it's for dealing with armed intruders in school. Why are we making the recommendation for this change? The Department of Homeland Security, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Massachusetts Task Force on School Safety and Security recommend changing from the previous policy of sheltering in place to a more flexible and empowering response. The U.S. Department of Education recommends providing protocol behind traditional lockdown. The acronym ALICE stands for A is for alert, all people can announce information, no codes are used. L is for lockdown, teachers and students barricade themselves into a room. I is for inform, for constant information update transmitted over the PA or via technology. C is for counter, if encountering the intruder, take steps to stop the event. E is for evacuate, get away from the danger if possible. What are the changes moving from ALICE to our past practice? In terms of the alert, previously, only the principal could make announcements. With the new protocol, anyone can make announcements, and there will be no codes. It will be clear what is happening. The lockdown, all students and staff will be trained in traditional lockdown previously, which was called shelter in place. With ALICE, it will be an enhance with barricade training. In terms of inform, information previously was provided after the lockdown. In ALICE, we will provide real-time updates in what is happening. Counter previously was not practiced. In ALICE, it is used as a last resort to interrupt the situation and get students to safety. E is evacuate. Previously, it was practiced, but not in conjunction with lockdown. We sheltered in place. We did not move. With ALICE, we evacuate if it is safe to do so. In terms of implementation, we will begin training of our staff in August of 2016 with a review of the new protocol and what it means. And then in October of 2016, we would anticipate having some school drills on the new protocol. Chief Spleen, did you have anything you'd like to add, if you don't mind?
Just totally in support of this change. You've got to change kind of the times. You've got to empower the kids and the teachers to learn to save themselves. This is one of my major concerns is, you know, this Silver Lake campus, the middle school, the high school. This is a huge soft target, and you've got to be proactive. If there's an active shooter in the vocational wing, and you have kids here in the library, you want them to, you know, make the decision to get out, utilize this store, not sit in here and just wait to be a target. I mean, this is what most of the schools are doing now. It's gonna be tailored to the grade levels. What's gonna be appropriate up here is not gonna be the same plan that'll be implemented in the elementary schools. But, you know, with, you know, with, you know, again, just trying to, you know, be... again, just trying to, you know, be proactive. We're one of those, you know, last school districts to move to this philosophy. I mean, this has been done in the other towns, you know, prior. So again, we're just moving slow, we're trying to get all the, you know, players involved here, give everybody some say, and this is supported by both police, fire, and the administrators.
Absolutely. Jason?
Thank you. I've been trained in the ALICE program, and I know that the superintendent doesn't need our approval for procedural change, but she asked.
Ditto. I, I've run it three years now in my school, and it's, it's just, the pressure takes off the kids when they feel like they're hunkering down. This isn't much of a way to go, especially at the high school level, the middle school level.
Maureen?
Just a question, chief. Are the other two town chiefs involved in this as well?
Right. The three fire, the three fire chiefs, three police chiefs, the school administrators, the principals, superintendents, we've all been sitting at the table, back this table here, and, you know, just, you know, I think we've had five times-
We did.
-to go over, you know, the different aspects. There's going to be some trainers from the schools, there's going to be trainers from the police department, and, you know, they're going to be, you know, talking to the school staff and, you know, you know, basically empowering them to, to help themselves.
Thank you.
One other thing I did just want to mention is actually the town of Plimpton, the great town of Plimpton, will be hosting ALICE training at the Dennett Elementary School in August. So we'll be sending several administrators and inviting surrounding towns to provide, to make sure all of our administrators are, at least one administrator is trained in each building, official training. So, again, as Jason and Mark both indicated, this is a process, a procedure, doesn't require a school committee vote, this is strictly for your information. I had mentioned in the fall, this is something that, you know, I'd been interested in moving towards over the last couple of years, but now we were in a position to have that happen. So we worked on it all year, really appreciate all the police chiefs, they attended every meeting and were huge support in helping us to put together our manuals, so I want to thank them for it.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you, Mo. The only other thing I had down was budget discussion. We talked a lot about the cafeteria program. I did ask Dave Ziole to put together a document for you, which you can look at. Dave Ziole is our cafeteria manager. He has tried numerous initiatives this year. They have really not been successful in having us meet the budget numbers that we're looking towards. It has not been for a lack of effort. We're still struggling on trying to figure out how to make this work, and I do agree, I'd love to take some time this summer, maybe look at the revolving fund and where we're going wrong. So the, you have the information here, this is the form, looks like this. He talks about some of the initiatives, some of the difficulties he has, he shares his revenue and his profits and loss. And again, this is as of May, so we anticipate by the time the school year ends that this will be even a greater deficit. So I think your motion, Mark, was well-placed, Mark Aubrey, to just take the whole deficit to move towards that. So that's here for your information. In terms of the other information, I did just, I'm thrilled that we're going to be starting an OPEP. That's something, again, we talked about in the fall, if you remember, if we had had money left. I think that's a move in the right direction. I want to thank the towns of Halifax and Plimpton for voting our Silver Lake budget. I'm absolutely thrilled that we have a budget. And in Kingston, we'll be having town meeting on Saturday at nine, and I am optimistic that they also will vote, but we do have our two-thirds, but I'm confident Kingston will also support our budget. We've been working very hard with Christine in terms of making sure we know what all of our incoming bills are, and that we're keeping good track of the budget, and I think we're going to get to the finish line and be in good shape. And I'm thrilled at what a good year we've had, and I just want to thank you all for your help and support in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
New business? Nothing in new business? Well-
I've got an idea that we don't have permission on, I'd just like to throw it out here. As Chairman of Planning Board in Kingston, we had a standing adjournment at nine o'clock. In this case, it would be my suggestion that standing would mean that we were planning to adjourn at nine o'clock. And if nine o'clock rolls around, it requires our policy to then have a vote with the members. A lot of times, we have to report things to move along, so then we would have to take a vote to stay in session. But that would at least let everybody know that that's the plan. How Mr. Creed isn't here to say, "I'm home." I would just like to quote that, maybe something to consider for our next meeting. It worked very well because we, everybody saw, they knew where we were, and we got close to the nine, we kept the agenda moving along. We extended it several times. I don't think we ever had a vote, but at least it, it puts a line in the sand so that, you know, the meeting's going to, just something to think about in the next meeting.
Put that on the agenda for next month? Sure. Thank you, Mark. Old business, administration building.
We haven't gone any further, but it's nice to have a little bit of discussion about, about it right now. It, we don't have any money allocated or invited at this time, but the proposal is still up in our dail to do some type of an addition. I think it would, we still require some conceptual idea of what we would need to do to make our, our building handicap accessible and add whatever we need for space to accommodate professionals that we have in here right now. And then from a sketch, we'd have to go to an architect to get that done. We looked into trying to get the CT kids or the engineering, auto cab group to do some planning on our behalf, but I think it's not going to fit into the scope of the education side of it. So over the summer, I'd like to sit down and put the building structure for a few more months, and we'll see if we can come up with some sketches and then bring them to, come back to you and see if we can find a few dollars, see if we can get a budget to go out and see if we can get somebody a few other sets of plans to pull. There is a good possibility that some of the construction could be done by the CT schools as part of their education. The history of that building is two separate construction projects, and both were done by the CT schools. So it makes sense that we still could add as a possibility, and it would involve handicap, handicap ramping, and a lot of the things that they need to know. Back to you in September.
Thank you. Community outreach. I don't have anything specific on that, other than, I just want to throw it out to the committee. After tonight's vote regarding the sale, the Kingston land sale, is there a community outreach that needs to happen from us? I throw it out there.
I don't know why I'm having Jason turn.
No?
I don't know. Is it up to, to, why don't we expect some town meeting?
Okay.
That's one of the decisions, isn't it?
All right.
Isn't that this week?
They don't vote your override, you're not going to have an issue.
Okay.
You're not hearing.
Yeah. All righty. I may ask that same question next month. I'm sorry?
Will you? I don't think anybody will run, but then have it not.
And I guess it does depend on what happens this weekend. You know, obviously, us folks from Halifax had a different opinion. I felt just as strongly as, as my colleagues did, that all three towns should have had a, a vote, a say in the matter. If they move forward, if things go in a positive direction this weekend with, with Kingston, I'm wondering if some sort of outreach, and maybe it's driven by Kingston, you know, if, if we gave them the ability to move this forward without town meeting votes, maybe there is a, you know, an obligation, if you will, for them to, you know, come to each community well-publicized and, and really explain to everybody what's, what's happening and what their plans are.
Or, maybe we should ask Mr. Colton, since he's the one that sat through the legislation of this.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Or, or some combination thereof.
Yeah. And I'm sure our reporter tells some information about it.
Okay.
And if we, we did want to wrap the letter, if you'd like, Assistant, participate some of the arguments that we put out, so, Maureen, just so we could, if we want to put out a letter from this school community, get to that point. I think there's some arguments, I mean, there's a, you know, $8,000 revenue saving for the town of Halifax, that they don't have to pay for the capital dividends, and the state can keep it for some thousand, and they can have a sale for it. So this is, some of those arguments that could be put into the letter and show that there is some benefit and value.
Yeah.
I'd get work on the rap, but we're going to have to work, you know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe, Mark, for next meeting?
I'll, I'll, I'll work on the rap, but I'd like to reword the, you know.
But it all goes back to the same problem we've always, always had in terms of getting the communities more involved in our other meetings. We, we spent a year and a half on this project, and we, they had ample opportunity to plan to come to meetings, but we needed to publicize it maybe in a different way, that they would have some more input if they actually came to some of these meetings we had on this land sale, and all the other ones we have as well. So the original idea about the outreach, just in general, needs to be expanded in a certain way.
In what way, though? I mean, can you really hear what we're telling you? Would you send out a newsletter, just tell people, because, I mean, our meetings are open, and they're, you know, like, it's tough, people don't go. I mean, it has to be pushed on, you can't invite them because they're not going to come.
We've struggled with this for, for so long, and we had some dialogue over the, you know, last year or so with, how do we get ourselves out there a bit more and get more interaction, more interest? One of the things we did was various members of the committee went before groups of people that were going to be in the school for various reasons, PTL meeting, you know, junior parents' breakfast, senior students' parents' breakfast. We're trying to, you know, take the, the, you know, the situations where you've got a large group of parents held captive, if you will-
Right.
-and, and talk with them a little bit, you know, make them aware of what we do, why we do it, et cetera, just to, you know, try and, and get some interest and, and interaction.
Maybe even senior centers, I mean, I mean, or council on aging, because I, I know they're not invested in the students. Maybe they have parent children in, in the schools, but, you know, for them, it's a, it's also a tax issue, you know, and maybe explain how.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, Halifax has a very large senior population as well, so. Jason?
Madam Chair, just reading up on what you said, agent, it can be, someone goes out and votes to explain some of the positions of the local committee and to seek their approval, not just to report that, legislature can be the donor for the decision. So if you would like to charge, you would sound with responsibilities of what you were doing as community outreach under that ALICE, would you?
I don't know that much.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think any avenue that we can possibly take is, is my thought anyway. Okay.
So we need to, do we need to amend motion on that as part of this legislative agent position?
Do we, or is it?
No.
It sounds like it's-
We seem to have heard your position, if we interpret it more broadly than the other than asked. I think it's a good initiative.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, and I, I think item C, the land purchase, I, I think we've covered that to death tonight. Principal Mulcahy, welcome.
Thank you. Last month, while Mrs. Hatch, no, last month, in April, Mrs. Hatch and I were at the Jake Celebration in San Luis Obispo, Mr. Bledt presented the handbook and gave you the original version with some of the changes that we had put in for the 1617 school year. I've given you an updated version with the title, the, the cover page that has the changes highlighted in red. There are some additional changes that are, are listed in there. I'll just highlight a few to be recognized tonight. Page 17 of the document, we have updated the sexual harassment policy. It's updated language to coincide with current MGL procedures. We just updated a, a law that, that, when we wrote this originally, because the state has made changes on it, we wanted to reflect that, and that has gone through our council. Page 21, policy on physical restraint, that's also been updated based on changes to the OCR law, Office of Civil Rights Law, regarding physical restraint. That has been shared with our staff as well halfway through the year, but now is included in the student handbook. More clerical, page 12, the Title Line Coordinator. Instead of listing a specific name, we list the titles, just Assistant Superintendent, is our Title Line Coordinator for the district. Finally, what you won't see on that cover sheet is the updated fee structure for the athletic fees that you voted on earlier this year. They appear in the Athletic Handbook, which you all know is an online document and not part of our student handbook. So the updated fee structure is put into that Athletic Handbook for our fall season. That'll be the next time people will be taking a look at that and signing off on it.
We got that by email too today, or yesterday, I think.
Look at that. Very good. Confirmation that that's already completed. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. So what we'll be looking for tonight is a vote on the handbook. The, the bigger changes that we had through school council had pushed were discussed by Mr. Bledt at the April meeting. The ones that I'm pushing forward to you tonight are really just policy changes through, through MGL and OCR laws. They're not really changes that we have made on our own. So in order for this to go to print and be ready for the start of school, we are asking for your vote tonight. I believe the middle school will be as well, after I finish my report.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the changes to the Athletic Handbook.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to echo my colleagues, I'm Ms. Lea, graduation on Saturday was outstanding. Many of you were in attendance, and we appreciate your support in being there. It was Madam Chair Hatch's first graduation giving out diplomas, I thought she did-
In more than one way?
Yeah. Thought she did a stellar, stellar job. Many of you had students graduating, joined us up on stage to, to deliver their diplomas to their children, which was a great tradition that the school committee tends to honor. And so it was a great day. I want to thank all involved, making it, that made it such a success, including staff members that were probably, I think, I don't have the final number because some people straggled on that day. There's roughly about 50 staff members that show up to graduation, and having worked in a couple of districts prior to this one, that is a very, very strong showing of staff support towards their students. They get to see, as I say to them, the fruits of their labor. That's the, that's a huge day, and I think part of our ceremony where the staff walks in and kind of parks, and the, and the students walk through, and they congratulate them as they go on and pass through to their parents and up on the stage, is a very nice ceremony. So I want to thank the staff for all their support in that day. The planning for that, for the graduation starts in December, and we have meetings all the way up through until the graduation ceremony. I want to thank specifically, obviously, the class officers, the senior class advisors who were here earlier tonight, Ashley Basanti and Taylor Redeman, they did a great job. But also a special thanks to Mrs. Batista, Ms. Batista, Mrs. Johnson, and Mrs. Roy, who helped out with the graduation committee this year and did a great job. Our honored guests were the class of 1966. They were a great group to hang out with, and they were very excited to be here. It's a great tradition to honor the 50th anniversary class, something that we continue to do every year, and it's very special. It's a good connection for the kids to have with the history of, of this community, and also great for those graduates to come back and see what they, you know, which is 10 years old at this point, but the new building, and they get a tour of the facility. Mary Gazzola, one of our teachers who's a graduate of Silver Lake, always volunteers to be the tour guide on that, on that day and bring the class, the graduates around. So a great day had by all. You know, this is my third year as principal, we've had three outdoor ceremonies, and it's, they've been beautiful each time, so I'm thankful for that weather and for that ceremony. So thanks to all for that. Last night, we had our Evening of Excellence. Evening took place with over, just about 340 students, students receiving over 500 awards. That event's always standing room only, there's people in the aisle, the seats are full, but people in the aisles and in the back concourse, just hanging out. I mean, it's a, it's a great night. Parents appreciate the, the way we have it set up. It's a very quick evening, which is good because we know why we're there. I tell parents, you don't need to hear me talk that night, you know, you're there, you know, your child is getting recognized. And the special part of the evening, it's an evening organized by teachers, put on by teachers, and celebrated by teachers as they congratulate all the students that they've nominated. nominated for awards in that night. So it's an outstanding evening. That was last night. Today, we just keep rolling with these awards there. Today was Step Up Day, and I know the middle school will talk about that, it's a big day for them, having the sixth grade come up to their building, but the eighth grade students come up to our building, and they, they go on a little tour of their own. They have an activities fair in the cafeteria, where every extracurricular activity and sport has a little booth where students can visit. They're treated by band and choral presentations in the auditorium, which is very nice for them to see, and then they meet the guidance staff, the administrators, the librarian up in the large group room, and they get a little, as I tell them, Taste of Silver Lake today, it's the second part of a three-part visit. They came over the winter to visit our shops and our CTE program, the entire eighth grade did. They visit us today for Step Up Day, and then on August nineteenth, they visit us for their freshman orientation, so they get a nice transition there before they make their way in the fall to the high school. And I tell them, you know, when they come up here in August, one of the things we do to help train or transition is we actually serve them a small lunch, and they go through the cafeteria. So I promised the eighth graders that I'll buy them slices when they come up here in August, and one of them said, I'll hold you two then. That was fun. I have a couple of, a couple of items to talk about. One is a field trip, which usually I bring up, out-of-state field trips. This is not an out-of-state field trip, but it's a summer field trip. So I don't quite know if I need your permission on this one, but I wanted to let you know anyways. Kelly DePasco and Heather Bates, along with some other chaperones, are planning to take a group of students to the Regal Music Theater in Waltham to see thoroughly modern Millie this July. Kim, are you going to that?
No.
Okay, are you going to Jenny Lynn? Okay, I'm sorry, they didn't, they just listed two, they hadn't decided the other chaperone. The trip's on July fifteenth, with the students taking a bus from the school at five and returning at eleven PM. Like I said, I wanted you to be aware that we don't usually have summer field trips, so there would be some activity here, and I'm not sure I need permission, but, you know. Thank you, here you go.
I'm looking at the commission from the school committee to do the summer field trip, and I'm pretty happy.
You can go too. You want to go? Oh.
She's going to arrange the weather for you, and she messes it great.
Oh, perfect, thank you, Maria, I appreciate it.
I'd like to amend a motion. I'd like to amend a motion to include our future summer field trips as well.
All right, great.
Can I just ask, do we want to do that?
Yeah.
No, I'd like to know if they are. Yeah. Do you want to, do you want, does your motion stand, people?
For this one, right?
Like, in the future, I'd like to know personally where they're going before.
Okay. I still agree with my motion, but I defer to the group, trying to draw my amendment.
Thank you, all right. All those in favor of the original motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I know it's not on my agenda, I wanted to mention, before I get to my donation, real quick, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Senior Awards Night last Thursday, which a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in scholarships went out to our senior class, and many families, community members come in and present these memorial scholarships or honorary scholarships through our booster programs to our students. A really special night, and I want to thank the community publicly on TV here to let them know that we really appreciate everything that they do, all the support that comes in, especially for our outgoing seniors at the end. It's really a special night, so. And thank you for anyone that was in the audience on that night that's here tonight as well. One final thing I have is a donation. Dominick's Tuxedo of Plymouth has donated three hundred and ninety-five dollars to the class of two thousand and sixteen, based on the business that they received during this prom season. The deal with Dominick's is you go down and get your tux, they give back, every tux that they have from Silver Lake, they give five dollars back to the class. It's very nice, I would, I would ask the committee for a vote of acceptance on this donation, and I'll be sure to send a letter to Dominick thanking him for his generosity. He makes a personal visit to me to deliver the check. Very nice person, so.
Motion's moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Hatch, you brought up earlier tonight that we had student present, student presentations that were going to happen tonight from the high school. As you know, our baseball and softball teams are still in the tournament. Our baseball team won tonight in Brantree against Adelboro, three to nothing, so they'll go on to the South Final to be determined. Our real softball team is playing tomorrow night at eight o'clock at Taunton High School versus Bishop Fiat. Who is going to come tonight was seniors Anthony Vedetto and Madison Barone, who are both Gatorade Players of the Year for Massachusetts, which is a huge honor. It's, it's the MVP in that sport for the state, and very rarely do you get two in one season. It's only happened a handful of times in the state. They want to come back, they, they were going to come tonight, we worked it out, so they'll come in July, because at that point, you know, the state finals will be over at that point. So they'll come back, and they'll be honored by the state. I needed to say it because it's fresh now, so.
I just have a couple of comments, Paul.
Yep.
First of all, what can I add? We've been waiting, I've been waiting all year for this, so I want you to know it, it was very nervous that you, you weren't, you know, that your report was not shared with us in, you know, it was great that you gave us your tribute, but having to see about it, enthusiasm, the whole, right, kids are doing, that's, that's why I'm going to need it. So just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Saturday, I was at the awards night with the hundred and fifty-four thousand, and one of the things that struck me more than anything was how many of the donations were due to children that had been killed in the car crashes. And it just, it hit me so much to think, you know, almost every other group that came up was passed away then, passed away then, you know, a drunk driver hit the child or something like that, but it just, I just wish the kids could understand, you know, it just happens like, like that. And I, you know, I just think it's important to really get that out there. We had some other wonderful memorials, certainly, you know, we know really the people who are just different things, and the recognition of the students, that really can be some of yours.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd also like to add, you know, I've known Joe Jakes for about ten years, I've served on the Kingston School Committee, and his favorite thing every year is going to the awards night, and he and I did it, I think, once or twice, I did it one year. He loved it, and I think it's aw, I can't wait until next year, I know his family can set up a scholarship in his name. You know, I really look forward to seeing that happen, because it's a great way to memorialize Joe, and this was, as I said, and this is something he loved doing. Not many of the, of the scholarships and the people that have been memorialized have probably never been to one, to the awards night that Joe really did, so it's just awesome.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to share a good moment from graduation. As we were waiting to march up with the students and the administration, the class of nineteen sixty-six was right behind us, when the class of two thousand and sixteen saw their teachers coming, they started cheering, and the teachers started cheering back for the kids. And one of the class of nineteen sixty-six said, wow, they really love their teachers, and one of their friends said, and their teachers obviously love them. And then, all of a sudden, they started talking about their teacher and their appearance at school, and it was a really special honor to be part of, and it's due to what we do here every day, I was honored to be part of.
Thank you. Okay, well, somebody gave the other Jim the night off. Welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening, I'm happy to be here tonight, as you know, Jim Field, the building principal is in Chicago, excuse me, Chicago, he's at the National History meeting with the son James.
Oh.
So we congratulate James, and to want to have him represent Silver Lake Middle School in the national spotlight, so congrats and good luck to James. I know the first item was the, the green team. Again, we have some scheduling conflicts, and because of this, we felt that we would revisit the green team in the fall, you know, coming school year. The next item was the proposed revisions for the middle school student handbook. The majority of the proposed revisions were already discussed by Mr. Mulcahy, even more the district revisions that coincide with national law. You have a handout that has our entire handbook, and you also have a handout, a group page handout that drops down all of our proposed changes. You'll see the majority of that handout are the district policies that coincide with national law, but there are a few that I wanted to highlight that are more building based, one of which was an after-school cafeteria policy that we would like to implement, and that's basically to ensure the safety and security of all of our students, not just during the school hours, but also after school. And that just discusses that teachers will escort students to the cafeteria after they complete their after-school extra help, and that students will obey by school rules throughout the day, and also after school. That consists of the cell phone policy, which is obeyed by school rules. It also states that students will be picked up by three o'clock, and if they aren't picked up by three o'clock, then they'll have to take the late class home. So just another opportunity to ensure the safety and security of all of our students, not just during the school, but after school hours as well. The other proposed change that we'd like to highlight is in regards to our library. We want to try to utilize the library to the best of our ability, but we also want to limit the amount of disruptions, so we found that it was an opportunity to designate when times can come down and utilize the resources in the library, but also understanding and respecting that our other classes also utilize the library. So to minimize those disruptions, we can maximize class time, both in the classroom. So just a little, a few little things to highlight, but like I said, the majority of these revisions are coinciding with district policies that deal with national law. So tonight, we're also here to ask for a vote for the proposed changes to the Silver Lake Middle School handbook.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the changes to Silver Lake Middle School handbook.
All those in favor? Aye.
So as Mr. Mulcahy already said, we, we just completed Step Up Day. Yesterday, we delivered newsletters to all three of the elementary schools, and we also delivered newsletters yesterday afternoon to our seventh grade students. It was an opportunity, so today, when we had all the students coming and going, that they could all be with their new teachers and colleagues in the middle school. It was an excellent opportunity to watch, at the end of the day yesterday, all of the current seventh grade students receiving their newsletter, and you hear a motion, and they come flying down the stairs, and they're all waving their newsletter, and they're laughing, they're hugging, you know, they're giving each other high fives all the way to the bus, and I think that's just an example that we're not even in the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school year yet, our students are already eager and anticipating what's to come. So it was an excellent opportunity to see our seventh graders just ready for the new adventure and what's to come. Today, it was also exciting, we had around nine hundred students making a transition, that's a lot of students. We had the incoming sixth graders come up to the Silver Lake Middle School for the first time, we had them enter the auditorium, we spoke to them, and this was the first opportunity that we had the three schools come to one and start to represent the Laker family. It was a great opportunity to watch the students, some were a little timid, some were nervous, some were excited, but, you know, it's up to us to bring them together and to build that unity of what it means to be a Laker at Silver Lake Middle School. We also had the seventh graders venture down to the eighth grade hallway to now be the leaders of the school. They met their new teachers, they met their new colleagues, and it was an excellent opportunity to just watch them work with one another and really have a new start to work with new students, to work with new teachers. Lastly, we also had three hundred students, three hundred eighth grade students venture across to the high school. They were greeted and walked into the doors and enjoyed the first steps of being a high school student, and embracing life as a high school Laker. And they came back, and again, they were excited, you can see some of them were nervous because they are transitioning from one building to the next, and you can see that they really trust, and they're eager for the challenge to come. So we will miss them, but we know they will be successful for the next four years. We have the, as I said, the National History meeting this weekend in Chicago. I spoke that Jay C Field is representing the middle school, but we also had Jake Holmes and Anna Tunis are the three individuals who are representing Silver Lake Middle School in the national spotlight. So congratulations, we thank you, it's an excellent opportunity, and anytime we're recognized in the national spotlight, it's just such an asset to this community, so thank you. We had our spring concert on June first and June second in the auditorium, two nights of chorus and bands. We started performance from Mr. Way, and his inspiring performance of a beautiful band and chorus came in with some excellent singing. It was such an excellent opportunity to watch our students, you see them in the classrooms excel all the time, but it's also a good opportunity to see them outside the classroom just to be themselves. They were greeted and gave me such a round of applause, and I can't thank Mr. Way, and this is fully enough. I can't thank the students, they did a wonderful job, they had a wonderful performance, and I also want to thank everyone in attendance to this event, so thank you very much. We have the middle school art show on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, at the Kingston Library. The theme was Two Years in the Making. It was an opportunity for our eighth grade artists to have their work displayed for the month of May. Again, another opportunity to watch our students excel both in the classroom, but also outside of the classroom. I'd like to give thanks, and just so much effort and support came from Mrs. McGee, our teacher, so I want to thank her for all of her efforts, and I want to thank all the students for all their efforts with this fantastic art show. On tomorrow, we have our Technology Expo in the cafeteria from two to four. This is an opportunity for our students to display their technology and engineering projects, they can answer any questions about these projects, but they can also answer any questions about the class in general. Again, another opportunity to see our students shine, and it's really just a great opportunity to hear them, discuss things that they're really passionate about. So I really look forward to going down to that cafeteria, listening to each of the students as they explain these tremendous projects. I was told that there is a Humongous Goat Park down there as well, so they really put some hard work and some effort into these projects, so I can't thank them enough. And last but not least, on Monday, the thirteenth, we have our Evening of Excellence. As of right now, we have a hundred and fourteen students that are coming to be recognized for their excellence and achievement for the two-year tenure that they've served at Silver Lake Middle School. And again, another wonderful opportunity for our students, and I'm extremely proud of each of our students for demonstrating all the effort and the success that they've demonstrated for the past two years, and I can't thank them enough, and it's been an honor to be able to attend this event. And last but not least, this is my first year in the district, and I just want to say thank you to everyone, it's been a wonderful opportunity, and I want to thank the community, I want to thank the parents and the students for giving me the opportunity to work with their students, and I look forward to the years to come, so thank you, everybody.
Okay, future meetings, and one other thing I just want to point out is our next school committee meeting is July twenty-first, so if we just.
All right.
All right, it's, it's not our regularly scheduled increment. No need for executive session, so I think with that, we can have a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.